Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 13th, 2021, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 9th, 2021, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Present.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Stat?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And now, we'll read the motion to go into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 70 of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough on the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: One, the matters to be discussed are an update on negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association and Personnel Matters. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. We expect to be back at 7:30. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. We are now back from executive session. Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Present.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer? Ms. Stat?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. If we could have a stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence listed as listed and then go to Ms. Stats for committee reports on the Municipal Alliance and EFC.
Thank you, Mr. Heo. The Somerset County Educational Services Commission met on December 1st. The superintendent reported on the Ghana Bus Project, which is a project where students are renovating a bus to create a mobile library that will then be sent to Ghana. And it will serve 200 communities. And they're also expanding the Career Center for Culinary and Building Trades, and it will integrate carpentry, electrical, and plumbing. And the students may then have the opportunity to attend Go Tech. And Municipal Alliance met on December 10th, just this past Friday. We viewed the documentary, the Chris Heron documentary called "The First Day", which addresses how substance use first starts, just the first day of maybe having a beer during your, during high school days. It was very moving, and we discussed how we will use this documentary or parts of it throughout the community with follow-up discussions. We also discussed the Red Ribbon Week poster contest, and the posters will be displayed in the hallway at the Municipal Building. And also, just a reminder that Perform Care is a free source of information about resources and services related to behavioral health and substance use for youth and their families. I'll give you the phone number now, but, you know, just if you Google Perform Care, this will come up. The phone number is 1-877-652-7624. Thank you, Ms. Heo.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Next, I'd like to open it to the public for public input on the action agenda only. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comments. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Are there any comments from the public on tonight's action agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public comment section and turn it over to the superintendent for the action agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Heo. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows: 8.1, Motion to Approve Professional Travel-Related Expenses as Listed.
May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have any motion?
Sure.
Sorry, a roll call.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stat?
Yes.
Mr. Heo? Yes.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows: 9.1 to 9.11, Motion to Approve Resignations, Motion to Approve Revised Sixth Period Coverage and Revised Co-Curricular Advisors, Motion to Approve the Transfer/Change in Assignment, Motion to Approve Leaves of Absence, Motion to Approve Appointments, Motion to Approve a Buddy, Motion to Approve a Student/Teacher, Motion to Approve Sixth Period Coverage, Pre-approve Extra Coverage, and Motion to Approve Extra Coverage.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stat?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Operations Agenda as follows: 10.1, and there will be a 10.8, which I will read. 10.1, Motion to Approve Monthly Bills, Motion to Approve Line Item Transfers, Motion to Approve Maintenance and Capital Reserve Deposits, Motion to Approve Bylaws and Policies for Second Read-And, Motion to Approve Out-of-District Placements, the two of them, Motion to Approve a Settlement Agreement, and Motion to Authorize Eisner Advisory Group to Conduct a Special Purpose Audit.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Rodriguez, did you catch that?
No.
Was it Mr. Gillette and then Mr. Kidd? Mr. Kidd with first and Mr. Gillette with the second. Thank you. Any, any comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none, then if we could have a roll call?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Stat?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And then I'll turn it back to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Heo. It's always a pleasure to share the names of our teachers and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to the following 2021-2022 Teachers of the Year: Hillsborough High School, Angena Iron; Hillsborough Middle School, Ian Evans; Autton Road, Jessica Bonas; Amsterdam, Nicole De Leon; HES, Erin Chung; Sunnyme, Michelle Sarek; Triangle, Grace Verano; Woodfern, Heather Bartholomew; Woods Road, Lori Honigman. The following educational service professionals also we offer our congratulations. At the High School, Paul Johnson; Middle School, Tristan Garrettson; Autton Road, Joan Murphy; Amsterdam, Teresa Palmasano; HES, Deanna Barbaro; Sunnyme, Christina Bruno; Triangle, Barbara Golden; Woodfern, Wawa Bukang; and Woods Road, Mira Desai. We look forward to a board meeting in the next few months that we can officially recognize these recipients. I would also like to take a moment to recognize three board members who will be completing their term as board members at the January 3rd Board of Education meeting. Lisa Maroon. Over the last three years, Lisa served on the Communications Committee, Human Resources Committee, and is a current Chairperson of the Education Committee. Her time and commitment do not go unnoticed. Thank you. Jane Stats. Jane has served as Chairperson of the Communications Committee and member of the Human Resources Committee, Governance and Operations Committees. Jane has also been the Municipal Alliance Representative for the District for the past three years, and we too are thankful for her commitment. Chris Pulsifer, again. Chris has served multiple terms on the Board of Education over the past several years. During this most recent term, Chris served as Chairperson for both the Human Resources and Negotiations Committees and members of the Governance and Operations Committees. Thank you, Lisa, Jane, and Chris for making a difference in the education of our students and for the many volunteer hours you have spent away from your family to serve the community. I believe, what? Okay. So, thank you.
We have some plaques to honor your service, so I will give that out on behalf of the board.
I would like to commend Hillsborough High School Social Studies teacher, Bob Fenster, who was recently chosen to attend the 26th Annual Lincoln Forum in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, in November. He was one of three teachers selected from across the nation. Mr. Fenster was awarded a Full Lincoln Forum Teacher Scholarship to attend the three-day event. The scholarship recognizes excellence in history education. Congratulations. I believe he's in the audience tonight. As shared in the school messenger sent out last Friday, I would like to remind families that after many months of moderate COVID activity, all regions across the state are experiencing an increase in COVID cases. The entire state of New Jersey is now in the high range on the New Jersey Cali Report. Due to this change, and according to district policy, we have adjusted our quarantine guidelines for students and staff who are close contacts. Effective today, we announced it Friday, but effective today, the quarantine period is 14 days for those who remain unvaccinated. The quarantine period will start from the date of last exposure to a COVID-positive case. As a reminder, if your child is fully vaccinated for COVID-19, please be sure to share a copy of their vaccination card with the school nurse. Individuals who are fully vaccinated, defined as two weeks after the administration of the second dose of Pfizer or a single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, will not be required to quarantine. This quarantine requirement is for both students and staff alike. While this information may be unsettling for some, it is not surprising. The situation remains fluid and will change as the number of COVID cases fluctuate. Please remain vigilant in adhering to the recommendations of the CDC and your personal physician. We continue to work in collaboration with our district physician and our local health officials to keep our students and staff safe. Finally, as a reminder, schools will be closed for a half-day on Thursday, December 23rd, and then closed December 27th through December 31st. School resumes on Monday, January 3rd. On behalf of the entire board, I would like to wish everyone happy holidays and a healthy, safe break from school. Thank you, Ms. Heo.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. So next, I would like to open it up to the public for any public input on the 2022-2023 budget or public comments on any topic of interest to the school district. Okay.
Hi, Dana Gordon, Fort Dumont Round, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I know that Dr. Antunes already said this, but as a community member, I wanted to also take a minute to thank our three outgoing members, Mrs. Stats, Mrs. Maroon, and Mr. Pulsifer. I appreciate you taking on this important position as a Board of Education member. I wanted to acknowledge all the time you've put into doing this position and all the time you've taken away from your families to do this for us. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you for listening to points of view that may have differed from your own, and I hope that you enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Good evening. Anna Mailer, Levittown, Cleveland. I would like to echo those sentiments as well for our outgoing board members. I especially am really working with Jane on many issues in the Municipal Alliance of other areas. But I came here tonight because I was interested in getting a little more clarity and elaboration on how we are doing our district goal from a multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, and appreciation of the diversity in the community. I know Dr. Antunes gave four bullet points last week, and I just had some questions about how we are doing in meeting those goals. So she mentioned that the New Jersey School Boards Association Representative opened up a conversation surrounding implicit bias. I do some turnkeys on that, and I would be interested to know what was learned from that and what steps the board is taking to incorporate that learning. Mentioned that the New Jersey School Boards Association reviewed all current policies, and I'm just curious as to what came out of that review. Do we know if policies are being implemented fairly across all student populations, especially those that relate to opportunity and to discipline? So, for example, what do our statistics say in terms of equitable access to honors and AP courses, equitable rates of suspension, and other disciplinary acts across all student bodies? I'm curious as to what recommendations were made for improvement in these goals. The third comment was recommendation and adoption of books and novels from diverse authors promoting diverse characters. And again, I would be curious as to what books, what authors, what grades? Where would these books be located? How are they to be used? Would it be part of an instructional material or a choice reading? And then in terms of the turnkey training opportunities, I know that I've done a lot of those, and for the most part, it's still voluntary, so if a staff member chooses not to participate in those, they do not. And my last question would be, how is the community involved in any or all of these goals? I know that the purpose of these meetings is to conduct business and hear concerns, not appropriate forum for conversation, especially those that are uncomfortable or where we might not agree. But we can create a space, and I know you have the power to make that happen. In the past, the Community Partnership Network was formed to provide a space for this type of conversation, and I would encourage you to once again use that opportunity to have the community called in and bring in anyone who wants to contribute to the conversations of how we can emotionally support all students. This type of forum can move us towards understanding one another's perspectives and needs so we can work together. We know we're dedicated to the same goal, and we would not object to this evening. We all want our children and our students to be the best they can be, educated, healthy, and productive citizens of the global community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mailer, for your comments.
My name is Tiffany Neal at Six Seater Hill Terrace. As a public health professional and a Hillsborough parent, I urge you to support healthy school hours for our students. I understand that COVID-19 is a focus right now, but we also need to prioritize other aspects of student health and safety. Extensive scientific evidence shows that starting middle and high school at 8:30 a.m. or later improves physical health, mental health, and academic success among teenagers. As board members, you have the opportunity to make a real difference in our students' lives by implementing healthy school hours across the district. When kids go through puberty, their biological clock shifts later. Teenagers' bodies are in sleep mode from about 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., which does not match with early school start times. This is about biology and goes beyond healthy sleep habits like avoiding screens before bed. By starting Hillsborough High School before 8:30, we are preventing teens from getting the eight to 10 hours of sleep they need to be healthy, happy, and successful. Mental health is a real issue in our district, especially in the context of the COVID-19 pandemic. The data show that healthy school hours lead to a lower risk of depression, anxiety, and suicide, as well as reduced substance use and risk-taking. This is why later start times are recommended by Dr. Vivek Murthy and his recent Surgeon General's Advisory on Protecting Youth Mental Health. In the report, he recommends, quote, "Where feasible, school districts should also consider structural changes, such as a later start to the school day that supports students' well-being," end quote. I will add that anything is feasible if we make it a priority for our students. I know that change is hard. We had to deal with huge changes to school schedules and logistics last year due to COVID-19. Moving our schools to healthier start times would be a smaller adjustment and would have a lasting positive impact on student health and academics. A silver lining of the pandemic is the ESAR funding that is intended to support student learning and mental health. At least 20% of ESAR funds must go to evidence-based interventions, and later school start times are strongly evidence-based. ESAR funds could be used to analyze transportation needs and other factors to develop a healthy school hours plan that works for Hillsborough. Please start the planning process now so that we can implement healthy school hours in the fall of 2022. Don't let another school year go by with the missed opportunity to improve physical health, mental health, and academics for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Is there any other public comments?
Yes, good evening. Reverend Rodney Williams, 101 Everett Close. Last week, I requested access to the report on the goals that Dr. Antunes, but, and so I don't know what is going on with that. In the meantime, we've also attempted to request a meeting with Dr. Antunes and left a couple of messages and have not received any response yet. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you very much for your public comment. Is there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will close public comments, and we will perhaps maybe make a comment. Dr. Antunes? If you wanted to make a comment on any of the topics now that public comments is closed? No? Okay. So I will try to address some of the topics that were brought up. So thank you, Ms. Gordon, for, for the thanks and Ms. Mailer also. So with respect to the NJSBA training, that training was done at the November 8th meeting, and that was recorded, so it is available online for the public to view. That was with Vince DeLucia on implicit bias. With respect to the policy reviews, the specifics of the NJSBA review was really to ensure that the Hillsborough district policies are in line with what is required by the state. So basically, whether or not Hillsborough had critical, has critical policies that are required and mandated with respect to discipline issues, et cetera, that, that's not something that NJSBA looks at. With respect to the other items on books, novels, et cetera, I believe that's covered in Education Committee, which we actually had an Education Committee meeting today on HR, but I will report out, or actually, Mr. Oliver will report out in the January meeting, and I will report out for, or actually, Mr. Marini could report out for Education Committee in January. With respect to Ms. Neal's comments about healthy school hours, interestingly, that is actually something I'm very interested in. I was invited to be part of the, there's a New Jersey Pediatrics group that is talking about healthy school hours, as well as Pennsylvania, the Radnor, I think it's, I forget the name of it, but it's in Pennsylvania, and there's quite a large group of administrators, board members, parents who are on that one where they have a lot of experience. So it's really interesting. I think it's, I think realistically, no prom, I don't think September 2022 is even a possibility. I mean, it's, we're talking a couple of years. So, but we appreciate that advocacy. And with respect to Ms. Reverend Williams, the district goals, that PowerPoint should be available, but if it's not, I will look into it myself. So, thank you. Any comments from the board? Ms. Maroon?
Just want to take a minute and say thank you to all the fellow board members for the past three years. I know I may not have been as outspoken in the public sessions, but thank you for putting up with my crazy comments and, and lots of, lots of talking behind the scenes at all the committee meetings. And best of luck, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Ms. Stats?
I'm not that great at speaking extemporaneously, so I prepared something. I'd like to thank everyone for all of the help they have given me these past three years, especially for all of the work behind the scenes, providing answers to my many questions, especially Kate Chauncey. We are all in agreement that our students are our top priority, and I appreciate everyone's efforts on behalf of our students. Thank you to all of the parents for your involvement and input. Your varied perspectives helped the district serve all of our students more completely. Thank you to the administration and all staff for everything you do for our students. If I were any more specific while being even-handed, we would be here all night. And I thank Dr. Antunes for prioritizing keeping our staff and students safe and in school consistently, which I think many of us, myself included, have taken for granted. Thank you, Ms. Heo, for your calm leadership. And I thank all of my fellow board members for contributing various points of view. And now I'd like to speak to our students. We live in a great country where you can follow the path you want, when you want, whether you go to college now or later or never. When my son was little, he thought you were either a child or adult. Just throwing that out there for consideration. Anyway, I've been impressed by every single student who has spoken at board meetings and emailed the board, including the student board representatives such as Ray. Our students have always been respectful, even when they are negatively affected by a decision. They're informed and focused on the point they want to make, They're informed and focused on the point they want to make, and they have spoken passionately and wisely about important issues. So let's model ourselves after our students. I'll end with this: be honest and be kind always to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stats.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Gillette, okay.
No, well, I want to, I want to thank the outgoing board members, Ms. Maroon, Ms. Stats, and Mr. Pulsofer. And I've served quite a few years with Mr. Pulsofer on the board, and I know Dr. Antunes sort of summarized his career on the board, but I want to add a little bit to that because he's really been board member for quite a long time, and I think he deserves some recognition, further recognition for that. Chris is kind of a unique board member. He's, he's served three separate times on this board, which I like to say is one more than Grover Cleveland, and one fewer than Muhammad Ali, I think. You got to come back one more time and get the crown once more, because I think Muhammad Ali was champion four times if I'm not mistaken. So you got to come back one more to equal Ali, but pretty good. Three separate times, three separate times with five separate terms, but in total years, 11 years, eight months, just fewer than what would have been four terms. So his numbers are kind of all over the place, aren't they, Chris? He was first elected to a one-year term in 2002. I remember watching him on TV when I was just a kid, and I said, well, I can do that. That doesn't look too hard. Way back in 2002 for a one-year term, an ambitious young man that he was back then. He ran for a three-year term the next year and served for three years, came back in 2011, and that was the days when we were elected in April. So he served that with me for that long, three-years-and-eight-months term, because we didn't have elections again until the end of, until the end of 2012. So he's in that long term, and then was appointed to fill one year of an unexpired term in 2018, and then just keeps on coming back. Ran again the next year for the board, and that's the term that he's in now. Chris has been a steadying, steadying influence on this board for all the time that I've been on there, and we've clashed many times, especially during that middle period when he was on the board, 2011 to 14. We clashed a lot on different issues, we had different philosophies, but Chris has been, been steady. He always brings the board back to one of our, one of our, I think, overriding responsibilities, which is to protect the taxpayer, protect the public, when one of us might have some like crazy ideas of what to do. Chris says, wait a second, he's always the adult in the room, brings us back to reality. I think you wouldn't criticize that, Chris. You've been always the adult, saying, nope, that's, just doesn't work here. That's not going to work. And that's never been better exemplified than his many terms as Chair of Negotiations Committee and things, something that he started back in his first term on the, well, first stint on the board, when he was also Board President during that time, and also served as Vice President just a couple of years ago, I believe. So, Chris, I want to just say thank you. I know, listening to you all these years, you've made me a better board member just from your wisdom, which I think has come from your great age mostly, but also because of the knowledge you've accumulated over the years. And, and thank you, Chris, from me especially, but from, I guess, from the whole board. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Pulsofer?
I'd like to thank COVID for making me wear a mask so you don't see an old man blush or laugh at himself. I'd like to thank everybody who's been part of that illustrious career, certainly the current board members for your support and for your disagreement. I think it's important that we be able to agree and disagree and continue to make progress, which I think we've done this year, and certainly previous board members, you know, saw similar, and I think it's an important tradition of what we've done here. What I've seen in Hillsborough is the ability to have disagreements at this table, and yet still work towards the progress for the district and our students. So I really think this board has done a great job of that. I'd like to thank this administration for putting up with my complaints and my belligerence at times, and giving me a chance to air sometimes things that they want to hear, sometimes things I don't think they want to hear, but they always listen. And I have to, since you went back that far, Greg, I have to also give a special thanks to Dr. Bob Gulick, who actually challenged me to take a seat on this board, or tried to take a seat on this board, and did a lot to educate me and what's important about what we do at this table, and what's important about our participation as people in this community. When we were young, my parents instilled the values of serving your community to myself and my siblings. So I'd also like to thank this town and this community. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve this community, and I'd like to thank you for giving me multiple opportunities, as Greg cataloged, to be up here and serve this community. I've always felt that the most important thing we do is take care of our kids, and I try to keep us on the straight and narrow because of the impact that could have on the kids. So thank you all for your support and for helping me along the way, and just for all the time that everybody here puts in above and beyond to serve the students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so now it's my turn. I have written the last meeting of the year, so I'm going to start with the easy stuff first. First, actually, I want to congratulate our student representative, Ray Fafana, who's not here tonight, but on her publication of her children's book, Ray Ray Paints a Self-Portrait, which is based on her childhood experiences and growing up in a multiracial, multireligious, and multicultural home. Congratulations to Ray. Her book is available on Amazon.[1421.21][1421.21](APPLAUSE). Congratulations to board member Greg Gillette for being honored at last week's Somerset County School Boards Association for 10 years of board service. I believe, though, Greg will be, have been on the board for 15 years in April, so congratulations to Greg. You'll have to come to that Somerset County Board meeting in April and collect your 15-year pin. I have your 10-year pin for you tonight.
Thank you.[1451.13][1451.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so now, thank you to Lisa Maroon, Chris Pulsofer, and Jane Stats for your board service. I am very, very sorry that this is your last board meeting, and I will miss all three of you. To Lisa, thank you for your board service these last three years. I appreciate and continue to learn from you specifically, the clarity that you show and the boundaries between the roles of board member and superintendent. This has been invaluable to my learning and growth. I continue to learn. Thank you. To Chris, thank you for your guidance and advice from an experienced board member to this new one, board president's, I mean. I appreciate your advice and perspective and the words of experience. You were a very approachable mentor, and I appreciate your generosity of time as I navigated this role. Thank you also for leading the Negotiations Committee to that memorandum of agreement, and that is a true gift for the entire district as we enter the new year, and I thank you for that. Okay, to Jane, thank you for your friendship and advice these last three years. I'm really going to miss you. We learned and grew together, and I thank you for being Vice President this year, for your diligence as a board member by doing your homework, researching and learning, asking those hard questions, and attending seminars and workshops with me through school boards, and just always being kind and thoughtful in your presence and demeanor. You're a role model for the district. Thank you. So, to the community, this is our last board meeting of 2021. We've come a long way since January, and Jane and I are really on the same page a lot of times, because we did not coordinate this, but I actually had written some of, we overlapped, so I'll, if you'll indulge me with the, what I had written. So to our students, thank you for being you. I know it isn't always easy to express the real you, and the pandemic hasn't made it any easier. Please remember your parents and your teachers love you. They want you to be happy, and they want to support you. The emotion you're feeling, you're not the only one feeling it. So talk to your parents, your teachers, or trusted adults, and let them know what's going on. To the high school seniors who might be working over college applications over winter break or who may already have heard from colleges, remember where you go is not who you'll be. To those high school seniors who are choosing another path, whether it's going into the workforce, the military, maybe an apprenticeship, something else, that's great, too. There are so many choices in life. What's important is what works for you. And remember, it doesn't have to be perfect. Try something. If it doesn't work, try something else. You'll find it. To the parents, thank you for supporting your children and for your positive spirit and tone in words. Our children look to us adults to know that we are all working together to keep students and staff safe and healthy. So thank you, parents, for expressing your confidence in our public schools. And if your child is struggling, even if it's that vague feeling that something's not quite right, please reach out to your child's teacher or the school counselor for guidance. There are outside organizations that are free and can be a first step in seeking assistance. Ms. Stats had mentioned Perform Care, and there's also Pioneer Family Success Center in Somerville, which is a program of Empower Somerset, and they offer the community a gathering place to connect families to helpful resources in Somerset County and bring families together through free rents, programs, and local activities. With respect to Perform Care, one additional thing is that if your child is in crisis, they are your one-stop-shop phone number to, to, to direct you to the available services. So I highly recommend, there's, there's no stigma in calling. If your children or your, if your child needs help, please make that phone call. To our staff, and every, every single staff member from the classroom to the support services to our administration, thank you for working together as a team, for all your behind-the-scenes work that allowed the district to open schools and keep schools open five days a week, full days. I know it wasn't easy. It wasn't, and it isn't easy. Thank you for your dedication to our district students. And to my fellow board members, thank you for volunteering your time to come together as a collective Board of Education to make decisions in the best interests of our students. We're kind of like a soccer team in that an individual board member cannot accomplish anything alone. For example, as good as Cristiano Ronaldo is, all 11 players on the soccer team, that is, nine board members plus the superintendent and the board secretary, need to work together to get things done to benefit our students. We all had our reasons for running for a seat on the board, and I thank you all for putting those reasons aside to work together for our students. So with that, have a restful holiday break. We will be back on Monday, January 3 for board reorganization, and if there are no further comments, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsofer. Thank you, Mr. Gillette, all in favor.
Aye.
Good night, and have a good holiday.